The Board Office is cool and on cable vision channel 118 and Verizon Bio channel 22. I finally such you noticed this meeting was scheduled from Tuesday, April 21st, 2015. The Board will take formal action on payments of bills and other items. Again, thank you for coming. Thank you. Okay, whenever we want to be back, we'll thank you.
Goodbye, United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Adriani. Porcelli.
Yeah.
Freeman. Ellis Forster.
Here.
Hopman. Longin.
Here.
Singh.
Here.
Weber. Solkowski.
Here.
Formless S.
Okay, start the agenda and next Tuesday during the regular meeting, we will have a moment of silence. Would anybody volunteer to read the code of ethics next week? Oh, you sure? Okay, thank you. Okay, approval of minutes. Just as a problem with that. Reported the student representative to the Board, I guess we'll have a little presentation next week. Recognition out of looks of it, we have two sections of recognition.
That is correct. We'll have the Sedexo and McDavid Council.
And I believe Mr. Goodman from the Science Department, our physics teacher approached me. What he did is he, you know, get four or five students. They worked on the entrance to the school, who are on the right-hand side when you're coming in. They framed all that off and they planted a lot of flowers and bulbs and the bulbs wouldn't come up very shortly. He asked me if we can recommend this. The administration has got a hold of him.
Can we do that at the turnip?
Yeah. Okay, so then what we have next week?
Yes, we have reports about the process, all the processes we've gone through since December. Accreditation and what's.
Okay, progress towards goals, are we going to make it on that?
Yes, we're going.
Mr. Mayor, any correspondence?
No, no correspondence.
Okay, special committee reports, I believe we had a couple of meetings this month.
I had one there tonight.
You were.
It might not be at the Board here, but it's not going to be a part of the ballroom that should discuss. I'll have it picked up before I have to. I just want to say one thing, I don't remember who it was, who the idea was to make medical services.
That was Donna.
I have no idea, I mean, you were there.
That's why she's here.
Mrs. Baker had a walk probably an hour. Yeah, very, very informed if she, she ran the meeting for like first hour.
I kept saying please, someone.
Yeah. Reports, okay, so we're going to have.
They were helpful very well.
Now I'll have them as well. You're not going to go over the.
Yeah, well, the agenda is under policies to the US Department of Transportation.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that will be under policy.
Right. That's an F.
I don't want to be loud.
Okay, any use of the facility later? Okay, haring of residents on agenda items only. Would anybody like to get up and speak for, give me five minutes for first. Nothing? Thank you. Okay, policy, we'll be going over that, I guess, next week. We will be voting on it. I will be separating one of the policies, the one that I think is misworded. The policy is. No, I understand, but I'm still going to separate and explain why I'm separating. And the policy is policy number 3125, which just was put together by our attorney, Mr. Gordon. It's employment of teaching staff members. And I guess I'm the culprit behind this policy where I feel any important position. I'm talking superintendent, assistant superintendent, business administrator, anybody in that caliber. Where we have what we call a committee, which is when we hire somebody, we go sit down, there's three members of it. We have Ms. Longin, who is a longtime member of the Overtureship Board of Education School System. I guess she put about 15, 20 years and she has a lot of experience. We have another educator on there, which is Ms. Adriani, 36 years experience, and myself. And I feel that after the administration goes through the process of interviewing the, let's say, 40, 50 candidates that we have in that area, that the personnel committee sit down and go over the final three, the final three for the second round. Meet these people and let them tell us basically why they're applying for the job and why so to have them here. So I feel that the policy reads that we should only have one member. I feel that the three members should be. So I will separate that next week and explain. No, what happens is, you understand where I'm coming from? It's up to the superintendent to make the final decision who gets hired. We understand. And I'm sure he's going to pick the best person.
It's up to the superintendent to present? It's a recommendation.
Recommend.
I'm not debating your position, I'm just going to go, but did this complete the policy committee?
Policy committee recommended to keep one board member.
Okay, so that's what I'm missing, so the policy committee recommended what's on this paper, but you.
There was only two members of the policy and I wasn't considered the third member, even though I'm a member of all the committees.
But even if you had been.
I understand, I still would have been out ruled, okay?
So you just want to bring up that you, that the committee is going this way, you're choosing to have a different viewpoint.
Yes, I am.
All right.
Yes, I am.
I didn't.
That's why we have a personnel committee.
Okay, but I, I told you maybe you were trying to pull a policy.
Oh, by no means.
Oh, okay.
Oh, no, if it goes through a one, God bless them, I'll still come to the meeting.
Okay.
Because I'm the member that can go to any meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, what Mr. Cicilline has to say is that he's just going to suggest a revision of that policy between the first reading and second.
Right. I'm not going to have any input.
That's why you have a first reading.
I should have.
Go ahead.
The first two policies.
Go ahead.
0134, Board Self-Deval and 0152, Board Officers, why aren't things included in the ballot?
They're not included in the head of this moment because the consensus of the, and this is something that needs to be tweaked for next week's agenda. The consensus of the policy committee was to not present them for adoption. They are recommended but not required, so they are discussion and what do you want to do in policies, rather than you have to do this policies.
Yeah, because why are they on the agenda completely?
Oh, they shouldn't be, and that's what, that's what needs to be.
You're not going to change ours and keeping ours, and so that was the thing, we didn't have to take action.
So they should be.
Yeah, so we.
Yeah, Miss Longin, what happens is according to our attorney, these things are not mandated, okay? The Board Self-Deval.
I'm just wondering why they're on the agenda.
So, in fact, you might as well do this live, since I see Mrs. Torrey back there. If in the policy section 16, bylaw 0134, bylaw 0152, and policy and regulations 3218 and 4218. In those four instances, the consensus of the policy committee was not to present them for a first reading. So they should come off the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Okay, we're moving on to curriculum. Any questions on curriculum? One through eight.
I just had something for 2020 policy 2020.
Right.
There was a question that you brought up during the development of policy, and I talked to our student record specialist in that area. And a report can be generated to compare sections of a class from year two. So it doesn't have to be as a, you know, reporting as the year was on. But October, I can report to you how many sections of a particular class given from year to year. So you would know if there's an addition or subtraction second.
And that report can be generated with that on the papers.
Yes, people are right.
Yes, well, you know, we're flexible, you know, we focus on that. Curriculum, again, any questions on curriculum? One through eight.
Well, I'd like to.
Go ahead.
Just to add, I'm sure it'll come out in early time, South Athletic District. One of the items that Baker spoke about at length was the wonderful response that she had with staff members being trained either as delegates for the EpiPens or for the CPR with the AED devices. And each day, as members, there were just 72 people trained for the CPR. And the nurses would go doing a training almost every month, and there's new people that are coming on board for that, so.
But she was also concerned with.
Well, that's, let's wait till athletics. No, we don't forget.
People in the state.
Okay, athletics, one and two. Any questions? Any questions with athletics, one and two? Ms. Adriani?
Um, no, what, one of the things that we all should, we should really debate is, and of course, that you look here. We, the litigious society that we live in, we have AED devices available in our work, not necessarily all of our facilities. So without going into detail now, that's something that we want to make sure that we cover.
Other people are using the health facility.
I kind of started a discussion for now, but just.
Well, it's actually, there's nothing privileged or confidential really about it. Your obligation under Gant's law is the presence of those, of those apparatuses in your buildings, in your facilities. There are going to be times, just like with EpiPens, et cetera, where athletics make it very difficult logistically to get that kind of service mechanism to execute. The easy example that I often use is cross-country. Those kids are not together. They are strung, not strung out, but strung out along a cross-country course at various different speeds. And you either have to have a really fit para or something else. If this kid needs. You could buy a drone, that's, we'll all still follow that. But, you know, these are situations where you have to meet your pragmatic obligation by calling 911 in those circumstances.
This was not about our own sport, this was about.
Talking about visitors using.
It would be in the report, let's say somebody's walking around our track and they're doing their, making a run, and they would walk and.
We're not obligated, not obliged.
To do that.
The law states, as I mentioned, that the people that are must be accessible during the school day, as well as during school-sponsored athletic events or team practices within reasonable proximity of the athletic field or gymnasium.
We are 100% covered on that.
You don't have to have it available for everybody to be using.
It's not a community resource and for once.
Would you want to have it out?
No, 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 that was part of the discussion.
I can picture my school kids just getting a hold of the calculator and chucking. Another part of the law is it has to be unlocked.
No, it was part of our discussion and it was more about that we have an attachment, we're not releasing, using our facility and that.
Schools permitted use and school-sponsored use are very different things, so you are not on the hook legally.
Well, finally, so also going back to the other power draft about nursing, there was, I guess, concern, for lack of a better term, that on non-medical people, yes, I mean, I could be secure on this a year ago, but non-medical people might not know the difference, might not know the difference between a seizure and some kind of. That was another point, which again will be in my report, since we're talking about it, I don't know.
Well, that's, I don't know, Christmas, but that's the hiccup in the new policy. That when administering these generalized EpiPens that can be used for anyone, you don't have to be a medical person to administer the Epi. You think someone is having an allergic reaction.
They don't have, they can be for any person, but it might be diagnosed incorrect.
That's correct.
With the new laws, with the EpiPen law and the Gant's law of the AEDs, it in fact has a good faith exception because it is New Jersey and because they know what's going to happen with this well-intentioned set of laws. If somebody's going to put a dart in the kid who's just having a sneeze and fit. There is a good faith attempt amnesty from liability, there's indemnification right in the law. So although you always want to have your most qualified expert making that determination, you're talking about a child in crisis here, huh? So there is in fact language that covers that exact scenario, where somebody's taking their best guess at whether this child is in crisis. Appears to be an apelactic shock. You're as safe as you can be in this litigious society.
Going back to number seven on the curriculum, these are texts that are already reported and discussed. Page seven, number seven.
This is the textbook list that's on file, the existing list.
Oh, which is approved text book, it's not.
Number six.
Okay, moving on to finance.
Oh, I saw, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I saw the correction on athletics, two JJ, our wife is, this is out of.
The father is out of.
Yeah, he is out of.
He's not, he's not overshooting his place over.
Oh, I get it, like, not living in the district.
Right, right, no, he's not in district.
Am I?
Okay, now we're moving on to finance, we have a bill list. Any questions on the bill list, any concerns from the Board? Nothing?
Okay, that question.
Go ahead.
To finance tomorrow.
Okay, we're ready to go.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Mayor, ready to vote? Yeah, okay, I need a motion to move the bill list.
A moment.
Thank you, I need a second.
Longin will second, and Longin will be voting on all bills with the exception of batch four, which I will vote no on.
Your point, Mr. Mayor. Ellis Forster.
Yes.
Longin.
Yes.
Singh.
Yes.
Adriani. Porcelli. Freeman.
Yes.
Solkowski.
Uh, yes.
I have number one, pass this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, before we move on, any other questions on finance? Okay, non-certified personnel office. Any questions?
I'm sorry, before we move on, finance.
Go ahead.
I just think that some discussions should be provided on items five and six, fresh now, not going in depth. I mean, negotiation or any strategy, but I think that the major shift and advance, at least some discussion, I did speak to, to do about.
Who's going to answer though, Mr. Mayor or Mr.?
Well, I mean, what we're required to do on an annual basis is to, just like with any standard quotation that we get for products and services, we're required, I believe, under Honor of Late Five with the insurance law, to allow to get alternative coverage for all of our medical, dental, and vision prescription coverage. And we did that this year, however, and we do it every year, but this year, the law changed that we were able to get our specific experience from the state and federal plan that we were not able to do before. Actually, we were able to do it before, but we had to pay for it. So the law passed that we're able to go out and get our, we were able to get our experience and market that throughout the state. And we did that, and we're able, because of our experience, we're able to get an alternative coverage which is equal to or better than what the state health benefits plan is. And it puts us back on a fiscal basis rather than on a calendar basis, so it becomes much more beneficial to the district in terms of budgeting. And here, we expect to save a significant amount of money.
And what, you said that you were able to market it because you received the experience report. I know, I understand, you received that report, who passed, we take for it, but what was the experience, could you say that?
Well, Mr. Brian Reiser and Mr. Kevin Duffy are here. Brian Reiser, can you stand up? He's our new broker from Brown and Brown, he plays James Finch. We've had that firm for a long time, but Brian is the new representative of that work. So can you address this?
Sure, thank you, Joe. To answer your question, the Board actually received a two-year experience from the New Jersey State Health Benefits for calendar year 2013 as well as 2014. So when Joe started this process, we actually started in January, so it's been ongoing for the past four months. With the 2013 claims, they're running about 98%, and the 2014 claims were 92.3% loss ratio, claims versus premium loss ratio.
I don't want you to feel it's just for me, I mean, I've been part of the process and I've been part of the process in the past as well as this current one, but I think it warrants explanations for the public and to be on record.
Yes.
And as this, the motion not only affects all the employees here, but as it did six years ago, it impacts retirees that are covered under the plan too. And I just, just for full disclosure, I think everybody who's going to be voting on this next week who hasn't been in on the process or know what it's about should have a little bit of an overview.
Yes. Not only are we looking at the actives, but also the retirees covered. So when the Board of Education purchased the, not purchased, but received the claims experience, when the marketing was done, it's equal to or better than the existing plans. Also, for any retirees that have under 25 years of service that are on the plan currently, they will also be transitioned to Blue Cross if the Board decides to make that decision, go to Blue Cross. So they will be handled as well. We also are, have Cobra participants, anyone that's out on Cobra will be notified if the Board makes this decision as well. And also, we have DU 31, employees who have children between age 26 and 31 who are on the plan. They're also part of this change if the Board decides to make the change, and they'll also be going forward.
One other question, obviously, when you marketed the plan, you know what the state health benefit plan rates are for the 2014, uh, 15 year.
Correct.
We don't know what they will be effective January, but you have provided a quote effective July 1.
Correct.
And that quote for all levels is lower than the 2015 rate of the state?
In the way of benefit design, benefits are equal to.
The way of cost.
In the way of cost, no, no. If we have the guarantee for the fiscal year 2015 going into 16, if we trend forward the rates for 2016 versus the state, then there will be a savings to the district, depending on where people go into the plan.
So that's what I was trying to get at.
Right.
The state plan rate would be higher in.
2015.
Calendar 15 versus your rate for 15, 16.
The whole 12-month period, right.
In all facets, active, retired, the Cobra.
Well, it all depends on for whatever plan you enroll in, because you could look at the different offerings, because there's seven plans now that are going to be offered to, say, your retiree.
Not the 13 that the state offers.
No, it's the seven plans. If you're in a plan that the state offers, then Blue Cross, that's why the Blue Cross rep is with us tonight. If there's an opportunity where you say, hey, I have this plan under the state, they guarantee to match that plan as well. But right now, the focus was equal to or better than the existing plans. So if you're in a plan that is not offered through Blue Cross, they're willing to match that plan.
Joe, can I, can I ask a question, is there an attachment?
Oh, that, there shouldn't have been an attachment there, that was a mistake.
Okay, so there's no attachment B3 or B4? Okay.
I just have a question about retirees.
Sure.
Things that come up often.
Yes.
Is your, retiring from the school district, and you're in whatever you choose through the New Jersey state pension.
Correct.
So why would retirees be affected by what we do here?
Right, under 25 years of service, they're still under your plan. So now, if you terminate with the state, those people who do not have full lifetime benefits have to go with you. So let's just say you had another carrier, Joe's insurance, you'd have to go to that, but now it's the Blue Cross offering.
Okay.
So we have to worry about the actives, Cobra, retirees, and DU 31.
All right, I need you to explain that to the last one.
DU 31, in the state of New Jersey, there's a law that permits an employee here to have their child on the plan between age 26 and 31. They have to meet five criteria, they can't have any dependents of their own, they must live in the state of New Jersey. They can't have coverage offered to them through their health plan. If they meet all that criteria, they can enroll at their cost, the same plan that their parent has here. State plan has Education 10, the new plan has offering of Education 10. I'm the dependent, age 28, I don't have a job, I need that coverage, as long as my parent remains in the district, I could be on that plan as the same plan as my parent at my cost.
That's only for educators.
It's for New Jersey State Health Benefits Plan, and I think it could be for more people.
It's a full state mandate, so applies.
Yeah, it's DU 31, it's statewide.
Any fully insured plan in New Jersey?
I'm only asking for personally, my daughter's 26 and she had to fill out my policy.
But she has a right to go onto her own policy, so under DU 31, so whatever plan that you have, she can enroll in at her cost.
Just as long as it's a fully insured plan based at New Jersey.
Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are they going to stick around or no?
Do you have another question? Do you have a question?
Well, I'm just, I don't know, because it's not really the appropriate time, but I don't, I mean, it's.
Go ahead.
So I just wanted to go back, so the name, I know the provider's through Horizon. Okay, so is that, the name of that plan is direct access? I mean, is that information, like I.
Where's yours, go ahead.
The process was when the state gave the Board of Education their claims experience. Now, our job is to market the plan. So now, we have to get equal to or better than the existing plans. So you have 993 employees in the district in Education 10. Blue Cross has an exact same plan for those 993 people. We have 34 people in Direct 15, another plan being offered by the state. Blue Cross has that same plan for those 34 people as well. If the Board of Education passes the resolution, anyone can enroll in any of the seven plans that are being offered. It's a true open enrollment. At that time, you'll be provided with the rates, you decide which plan fits your needs, and you'll be charged the appropriate Chapter 78 contribution.
Okay, and the plan that would be aligned with the Direct 10, is the co-pay?
$10 co-pay in network, you have the ability to step out of network where the plan pays 80% after a deductible.
Then it would remain the same?
Everything's the same. The Board of Education was given with the proposal an equal to or better. The Board of Education was given with the proposal an equal to or better than letter, all deductibles will be carried over from seven, from one-one through six-thirty, so you won't have to satisfy more out-of-pocket expenses.
So I just have a question too. Is there an in-network deductible?
There's not an, there's not an in-network deductible, no.
Because some of them do have that.
Well, not, it's whatever you have currently in the state, so there are some lower costs and
And I recognize that, but, you know, being here a while, we have gone from Cigna to Horizon, which was a very big transition for us, and then we went from Horizon to, you know, the state plan. And by doing so, we were fortunate enough to have the Brown and Brown, which was part of the bargaining agreement, because there are a lot of employees here. You know, my concern, there will always be some discrepancy, it's inevitable, for somebody's going to go to a doctor, totally get that, something's going to come up, I used to get covered for this, now I'm not. So I just wanted to, so the co-pay remains ten, if they so choose that plan, as they can choose multiple plans?
Correct.
Okay, and there's no in-network deductible?
No.
Okay, any co-insurance?
There's co-insurance. On the out-of-network side, at eighty percent, you have an out-of-pocket of ten percent. When your ten percent's equate to four hundred for a single or eight hundred for a family, then the plan will pay a hundred percent on the in-network side. Those benefits are private duty nursing, durable medical supplies, and diabetic supplies.
Okay, and referrals?
You do not need referrals, just like your current plan. You have the ability to stay in-network or go out of network. The Board of Education, if they approve this, there's going to be seven plans. Some of the plans do require referrals, because again, it's matching the plans that the state has. So they have referrals, they have to pick a primary care physician and get a referral, see a specialist.
Looking at you, you don't get referrals, I know. Okay, and I just have, I just have just one question, and I don't know if Mr. Mayor is okay to answer now or later, but obviously, I'm going to ask for something to be provided, I know in the future, the plan, you know. But when you say significant savings, I was just inquiring of what would be considered significant? Are we talking three hundred thousand? I mean, when I looked at the numbers, to me, I don't
I really can't, I can't, I can't make that estimation, because the biggest problem that school districts have when they're in state health benefits plan is that that plan is a calendar-based, and the projections for that plan's increases next year are, I believe, eighteen percent. This year, our increase was thirteen percent. So it's really, it's very difficult for me to say whether it's, on the basis of where we are with these proposals, if the rates do come in at eighteen percent, and that's what I really have the budget for, we will save a few percent on, on the premiums, but I just, I can't say what that is until I know what the, what the premiums will be for January.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Should we say one other thing on, on Joe? The change in going from the state plan to private plan is that now the employees will have to pay the chapter seventy-eight contribution for not only medical and prescription, but for dental and BSP. So even if the rate goes down, I mean, not that this is something that, you know, it's the board's discretion to vote on that, but I just want to make sure all the board members know that. I know we've discussed it as, as a personnel committee, negotiations committee, but I just want to make sure the board is aware of all the facts.
Well, under chapter seventy-eight, if you're in a state health benefits plan, the employees' contribution is based on the medical coverage and the prescription coverage. If you go into a private plan, the contribute, you're also required to make a contribution on the basis which includes the dental and the vision coverage.
Any other questions? Thank you, we can move on. Non-certified personal office.
Before we move on from finance, I'm sorry to be a pain in the
No, that's all right. That's why we're here.
I just wanted to ask for a little explanation on numbers nine and ten, please.
On, on, in, in last year's, on number nine, in last year's budget, we included, the question that was adopted, well, I'm sorry, for the fourteen-fifteen budget, that we were, it was approved, that we were going to do three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars from maintenance reserve to cover a number of projects, maintenance-related projects that you hear. Those projects have been completed, and we needed to reboot the money from maintenance reserve. In terms of capital reserve, subsequent to the approval of the fourteen-fifteen budget, a decision was made to do a lease purchase for the salt roof project.
Yes.
So that money that was taken out of capital reserve, when it was budgeted to come out of capital reserve, came out of capital reserve, so we can fund the project, but since we leased purchased it, funding, we received the funding for the lease purchase, so I'm sending the money back for that project with the capital reserve.
I'm just bringing up that's significant, because also, that changes the amount that's in the reserve accounts, and I, I don't know if we're going to address that at the public hearing on Friday.
I will.
Thank you.
Before we leave finance, any other questions? Thank you. Okay, moving on to non-certified personal office. Questions here? Comments?
I had, I had questions, number four, due to the position of bookkeeper administration. As far as, there is no bookkeeper administration, there's bookkeeping specialists, junior bookkeeper, and there's no salary differential shown, and Mr. Mayor explained that with the motion to change.
Would you get any additional cost? Then I think the question would probably be additional cost, additional cost is about six hundred dollars.
Wasn't the amount, it was just the fact that the motion doesn't really explain, and it doesn't list the proper draft section.
Thank you.
We will have an
Okay, non-certified personal operations, one through
Yeah, we need to, we, we're still discussing questions, the right maybe, whether we should use the twenty-fourth or the thirtieth or the twentieth, so we're
So this, this will be
This will be fixed now.
Okay. Non-certified personal office, we have a question, we have a retirement, which I'll read next week, one through twelve. Any questions? Oh, there's nothing different, number nine, yes. That's a good one. I guess that'll be filled in or deleted.
I
Right, right, so we'll be going up to one through the last one.
Do you have a, if I had that office position, this is retirement office. Non-certified personal office, it'll be retirement. So you got that?
Yes.
There'll be something else, okay.
Yes, we know what
What a
Oh, no. Right, right.
Okay, and we're going on to certified personal, one through Okay, any questions on number one? This is for a sixth period. What I keep Mr. Mayor? I need a motion to move number one.
Number one?
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
Alice Forster?
Yes.
Manga?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Nadriani?
Yes.
Porcelli?
Yes.
Prima?
Yes.
Silikowski?
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
There are eight periods. So
Oh, there's split periods.
It's period four-five.
Which is lunch, isn't it?
Depends on what schedule you're on.
Right.
But, they're all the same length.
Okay. Looks like number two, we have more retirees here.
Twenty-sixty years.
Oh. Not just sixty years, huh?
Forty-seven. That is our most seasoned employee. Social.
Donna, you don't like to put that together between the two. We only have seventy-two. Okay, moving on.
I don't have anything right now, but we leave it on there until just
Okay, going on to certified personal, one through, what, one we went through, okay, one through, two through twenty-five. Any questions, guys?
Okay, number five.
Number five.
For number five, these are all the, the related retirees.
Right, so I mean, are they, these are the physicians, so
These are the physicians, we haven't hired any of them yet.
Just placeholders, so we don't
Right, they, they may like be pulled off of this agenda and be hired on the next agenda, but job postings have gone out, that's basically telling you that the roles have gone out.
My first question was, oh, we don't have names, and if so, then what?
Okay, probably not for this agenda.
And just for clarification, I did question, positions on number four, number five, and Dr. Hopey did provide a rationale, he was saying on replacements of retirees to do.
The preschool positions is, was, we had increased by a half-time teacher due to enrollment, and now we have to increase another half-time. So we have a recommendation that's going on that should, potentially, if it's the same person that is recommended, it could become a full-time, which This is now?
Yeah, because as the students turn three years old, you have to offer them services. So some students return three years old.
This isn't, we didn't go through this with the personnel
Every year, every year.
Just now getting the
I have a stupid question. Two halves, more costly than that.
Not in this case, no.
It's just like, you know, you buy a hefty hair, you buy a hefty hair, you're not like old.
I did learn it's a difference, it's a different budget, I
Yeah.
No benefits.
Yeah.
Frank, after that, no benefits.
Believe, if you
But there's not
Neither one is.
Neither one is, because there's not sixty days left in the calendar year. So even if the person in halftime becomes the full-time, they're two separate classes. They're both half-time, you know, half-day, seven.
Starts over.
Yes.
You said three-year-olds.
All depends on when everybody turns three.
Right, but we have now larger numbers moving to be really four.
We have some students that are exiting the preschool program and some that are staying, depending on how old they are. So if they're exiting and moving into kindergarten, that, that could reduce the numbers of students, of slots that we need in preschool.
It doesn't necessarily mean there's more three-year-olds than last year, it just means that we service them as they come three years old. So we don't hold empty, not sure if you understand, we wouldn't hold an empty classroom waiting for them to get to be three-years-old. So as they come three-years-old in the two thousand and fifteenth school year, we start entering them in.
Any other questions?
Number eight.
Okay, go ahead.
It's, it's a placeholder. There are Right, because it's a placeholder from last year's agenda, there's certain things that go on the agenda.
Kind of like a ticker list? Ticker from, so we just keep it on there, so you know.
When the date comes up, automatically you look at, and it says, you have to do this and this.
Right, this, these are the things we put up?
Yes.
Is it technology?
No.
I don't know the terms. Just let me get my abacus out.
That's good.
And we, we wanted to make sure that all of the items were listed here in the, that way, rather than adding something last minute, you've got a placeholder in the event that we need it for the regular agenda. If not, we'll pull it off and move to the next agenda.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on certified personnel? No? Okay, let's move on to non-certified personnel transportation, number one. Any questions? Okay, twice equipment and services, one through seventeen.
Have a question on number seven?
Yes, Ms. Ma. Go ahead.
The, this is a reduction, is it a reduction in the hit cost of doing the project, or is it part of, I know a real project has contingencies, is this, it just makes the age?
This is the kindergarten project over the summer, and the, as a result of whatever the issues that caused delay in the completion of the project, I mean, we came down to the last day before we had all the approvals, we were required to bring in custodians of the maintenance people on the weekends, and this is a change order dump for the cost of those custodians and maintenance people that come in on the weekends.
Because they were late in finishing the project?
Yes. Everything was expected to be finished by August twenty-first, and we went right up until the last day of the summer, and we had to have our guys work Saturdays.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks for that follow-up.
Anyone else? Our transportation, one through four. Any questions? Okay, Miss Lane, one through Okay, title of the truth should be one. Any other questions, comments? Okay, moving on to Romanule number twenty-eight, Board Secretary of Board Business. Any questions, comments? Okay, Hearing of Residents, number twenty-nine, on any school disposition. Yours? Anybody?
Hi. I'm Kathleen Smith with the Albee Shepherd PTA. I sent an email out just the other day regarding our playground issues. The PTA has raised twelve thousand dollars to replace a section of our playground. We have acquired an estimate, we had drawings done last year, and it has still not been approved. So we haven't purchased anything yet to move forward. Our struggle this year is the PTA funds can no longer stay in the account, so we either need approval to move forward, or we have to allocate those funds elsewhere, and we need to vote on that at our May meeting, so.
Yeah, I was, I, I was going to bring this up on their new, on their new business.
Okay.
Just prior to receiving your email, I had a discussion with, with Mr. Maranzoli, and we were discussing this, and the following day, he was in my office when the architect happened to be in my office on another project that we're doing. And we were able to review the, the probability of doing this project where it was proposed to be done, and we verified that the vendor that you're using has a state contractor, the state of New Jersey, whoever did this work for you did a good job to find where to do this, but we don't have to go out and bid or anything. The only thing is, there will be additional costs that the district will have to incur in order to complete the project, the mulch, fencing, and perimeter, keeping the mulch in, so I was just going to bring it up, and hopefully, we'll have a discussion tonight, so.
Okay.
Okay. Well, before we go on any further, go ahead. Yes?
Mr. Porcelli?
Yes.
You have any eavesdropping for projects that you all?
We, we do have eavesdropping, but
There's your mulch.
No, this is, this is special. Playground mulch is not mulch like mulch in your house, it's a special rubberized mulch that's very expensive, has to be, it has to be laid by the person who goes out of the land, it's not the same.
All right, who's in charge?
Well, what else is, Ms. Ma, I know you mentioned mulch, but
We, this is a, this is a playground for handicapped class students, so we need to do this professionally, not with
No, and I, and I get that, I get that, right, and I know, because we, we had this discussion regarding playgrounds quite some time ago, and I, well, I, I mentioned that Shepherd, I know that Shepherd was waiting to get their own playground equipment, we had some concerns with other playground equipment, and others around the district, because other playgrounds probably remember that conversation as well. And I had mentioned this thing, not too, that perhaps there could be some things around the playground that maybe would have to do if we need to, but, you know, I understand these, for the safety reasons, insurance reasons, and so on, this needs to be done specifically, but, you know, because they're not such a bind, and this has, this conversation, we took place quite, quite some time ago, quite a few months ago, so I, I'd like to tie me forward with that, I don't know if you guys might not have the conversation, but I'd like to
Well, board, well, first, I'm not sure what the situation is in other schools, but the way Shepherd has laid out, there, there's areas for four different playgrounds. I'm not sure that's the case in all the other schools, and any of the other schools where it's only one playground, if you go in and try to modify something, you have to make the entire playground eighty-eight compliant, so we're kind of prohibited from doing that. This particular setup, there's four separate playground areas, and this one area is just an area of mulch, so it's really going to be a new playground area, and that's why it has to be confined and separate in the arguments. And that's why it has to be confined and separate in the architect, so that's what we're saying.
Can I just speak about, the, going back to the playgrounds that we spoke about earlier in the air and some of them that, you know, I, I think there were swings that had to be taken down. When I was at Shepherd, it was a similar situation. And there was a wood climbing unit and there was, I believe, a slide. And they each had railroad ties, mulch and, and the unit within that square block. And there were two, I think, that were taken down. And then there was a big playground client, you know, that you would see at a park was in the other, one of the other sections and then swings. And they were never replaced. I think there were picnic tables that were put in the one square and then that left the remaining square. And there were several students that were in the building in the primary grades that didn't have the mobility that the, the majority of the students did. And, you know, they would go outside and we would do things and have them go around the building. They couldn't participate in the recess activities. And it was something that the students took initiative and said, we want to raise money. How could we, you know, build a handicap accessible playground? And I know the PTA has been working on that. And then, you know, it, it's a difficult thing to do because of all the logistics and legalities that are involved in it. And money has been held over and put aside and they continued, obviously, to raise money and are looking, you know, that's, that's where this whole thing with the Shepherd situation came up.
And just to continue, when I came aboard at the beginning of the summer, we started looking at the different options. Then we were hit with the, the winter time and recently, as soon as the weather allowed, we started re-focusing on, on the playground area. The big time constraint is the, the holdover money of the PTA.
So what is the, what is the constraint with that? How do we?
They, they cannot.
They don't use it.
They can't hold it over for another year.
But when is the, when is the year up?
So my question, Joe, would there be any way that they can, because even if this would happen tomorrow, we, the district would have to pay for full cost of it. And they would have to write a check to the district to reimburse us, right? So if they were to write a check to you in June with that.
Before we even get there, the board has to agree officially to accept this donation.
Right.
So once that happens, then we can move forward. And either they can give us the money or they can pay the vendor directly. I don't think that's an issue, either way. Directly, you know, if, if, that's what I was gonna ask. You can put it on the next agenda to accept the donation, then they can move forward. And we'll coordinate the act, you know, the, the implementation before the installation of the architect so that we know what we're doing in the process.
So I would think, and I shouldn't speak for Mrs. Smith back there, but the letter that you sent was just full of very, of frustration. So I think the earliest that they would know that the money is, is someplace else, that it would be like a, we're moving forward.
The right place.
Correct, because otherwise we won't have an opportunity to vote on it and we'll lose it to the state PTA.
So why can't we do this in May meetings? Do we do it everywhere?
We'll do the motion to accept the donation, they can send us a check and it'll be out there.
And then they pass the money.
And also just in case, if anybody would like more information or be able to, to speak with any of the PTA members, the eleventh of May, which is a Monday, we have a PTA meeting. So the invite is open if anybody wishes to come.
It would probably be easier that once we, Board agrees to accept the donation, that you just send me a check. Then you're, then you're finished with it and then we'll deal with any of that.
What is the estimated board cost?
About $3,000.
Your letter was very, very detailed, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question related to this somewhat. For years, the PTA has been told that they can fundraise for playground equipment, picnic tables, anything like that. At Carpenters, one year, we did, we raised about $18,000. This was a few years back. But we were told that we couldn't purchase the, anything that had to be done through the district. And they could not accept our money. So has that changed?
It hasn't changed. But what I said, what I prefaced this by saying, I'm not sure what the situation is at every school. The way it's set up at Shepherd, where there's four different playground areas and this is a separate and distinct area, we can do it there. But if this, but if we had one playground area and you wanted to put these two pieces of equipment in that playground area, you can't do that because you have to modify the entire playground.
Okay, so this area is already, it's already fenced in.
It's completely separate and there's no playground there at all.
Right now it's just railroad ties with mulch, and that's all.
But this question, if I may answer your question, I think your question is this. This administration and this board will not impede PTAs from supporting their schools as long as it falls into their legal confines of the law. And as long as we're not worried. Like this administration's. And I don't know if there's a little misunderstanding, what, what we were told years ago, because we, the Christmas school has done a number of donations back to school, iPads, smart boards, all that type of stuff. And what, what we're told is that we can purchase it, but it becomes, obviously, the property of condition. And so it could get shifted around, not that, not that the administration would do that. And I don't know if they can take a playground and move it either, but I'm just saying.
Well, at the time, our problem was, I mean, that slide at Carpenters was horrible, rusty, dangerous. These are huge, I mean, I can't even believe it was ever allowed to be that big on school property. I mean, it was crazy. The monkey, you know, everything gets old and outdated. The swings we have there now are, I believe, we're still trying to have them removed. I think we're on the list to have them removed because they're just dangerous. And so we had a very active, really super active PTA way back when. We made, we raised a lot of money and we did a lot of investigating. And then we were told that we could not do it and they could not.
I think the important thing is for the PTAs to work with their building principals, have them communicate their concerns. They bring to us, you know, cer- certain things like technology. You know, PTAs may feel they're doing a great job by going out and buying a, on the laptops. But if they're the ones that you get from Best Buy, they're not best suited for a, more of a commercial environment, which we are. So it's, sometimes it's best to go through our recommendations, or even our purchaser, and, and to get it that way.
Well, I think we usually, I remember, I knew you went out, at least speaking to the principal. But, I mean, I'm thrilled that they're, they're able to do it. I just was wondering if I would like to do it now. I mean, you know, it's getting big, because we've always told them, no, let's be a president, I remember, we couldn't do it, so. Thank you for putting that.
Any other comments from the public?
I just, I just have a question. I, I was just wondering if there was a completion date for the cell tower in the back of the high school.
It should be, that was on, that was the third item I was gonna bring up. It's exactly, it's exactly where they're reporting the specifications. So presently, presently, they're expected.
I'm sorry?
Presently, they're expected, subject to township approval, to work on the, on September, uh, not September, May 9th and 10th, Saturday and Sunday, to do the next stage of the installation. It should be finished by June 30th.
The entire thing?
Yeah, that's my understanding. There's, but there's, you know, things beyond our control, that's what they're telling me. And there is an issue that will require the power to be turned off in the high school for four hours. So again, that, that could bring it into the summer. So I'm not quite sure when it will happen. And then, you know, the township, like, for example, they're gonna work on Saturday and Sunday to do the next level. Township has to give you okay for that because they're gonna be drilling. And there's a noise ordinance that has to be complied with. So the plan is to have it done by June 30th, but it certainly should be done by September 1st.
And they can work on it during school, that way?
Well, they've been, they've been trying to work during school hours and we reject it each time.
I see you coming in on weekends and having school.
So Joe, and I know this has nothing to do with this, you know, because this administration wasn't sitting at this time. But, you know, I have, I just, I, I just, it's unfathomable to me that a district of this size, a school that has no playing fields or anything, that has to shuttle their kids, you know, would approve a cell tower on a school property that literally now is taking student driving, parking spaces. It just, it just amazes me. And it has, I know it has nothing to do with you guys, but the board, there were some board members that were here at the time. And there are some new board members. And I don't know if they've had the opportunity to drive back there, you know. But we're in a unique situation here on a one-site campus as it is. And now I feel like it's just one more thing that adds to, you know, difficulty of kind of expanding, well, this for the students as opposed to.
This is a project, this is a project.
It's prior. 2011.
And it closed in 2009. They've been trying to get the permits.
And, you know, I understood it too. And when I spoke to the building principal, I mean, the way I understood it was that it was going back into the fields. You have Project Adventure that is there, you know, that is to the left of it, which too is not set that far back, which is used through some of the phys ed courses. And now you have the cell tower which is adjacent to it directly, you know. And if you have the opportunity to drive back as a board member, you will see the amount of property that it's taking up. And I, I just find it interesting that it wasn't further back in the field.
I think that's what the original intention was, but it was determined that that was wetlands.
Wetlands, which is why we have issues with fields. Okay, thank you.
Can I just add that it was approved at the time, right after the state aid was slashed and positions were privatized. And we had meetings almost every month on how to find ways to raise revenue. We looked at cell towers. We were very big into looking at advertising and it, but, you know, it's just one of those things. And I don't think this is the original location, as Joe said.
No, it's clearly not the original location.
I just, I just don't see it on a school property at all, like, any cell tower. But it's a school property. I, I just was surprised, that's all. And I remember being at the board meetings when it was discussed, you know, but I was not aware that it was finaled and we saw nothing for four years, so.
Well, one of Jake Brown brought in a certain amount of revenue. And then, you know, we were having the cell tower, then we were gonna have separate leases on it, different utilities that were supposedly gonna bring in more money than what we're getting now. But that didn't pan out either, so.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, before we go any further into new business and old business, even though we've covered a lot of old and new business already, I would like to read off all the following meetings which are coming up. I gotta stop you listening to the story. Next Tuesday, which is the 28th, we have our regular board meeting. On the 29th is a very, very important meeting. It's public hearing to adopt the budget. On Monday, that's when it's close to the public, it's negotiations. Wednesday, it's Personnel, Ms. Adriani will be running there. Early in the morning, take out the time.
About 7:30?
No, 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 9:15. No, take that 5 o'clock. Oh, Wednesday, May 6th, which is long range, there's strategic planning, Mr. Porcelli will be running there at 7 o'clock here. Monday, the 11th, curriculum visual performing arts, Ms. Hoffman and Mr. Weber. Tuesday, May 12th, the regular agenda session in this room. On Thursday, May 14th, Ms. Longham will be running negotiations, which is close to the public again. On Tuesday, May 19th, we will have the regular televised meeting.
Can I ask you something on that one? When is the picture of the year? I was asking.
19, May 19th.
Oh, because it says studio, that's usually what it comes to. No, it's a different location. It said year.
6:45 is the picture, 7, 7:30 is the project. It is newer, so it is.
Okay. Okay, on May 21st, long range planning, Mr. Porcelli again, right in this room at 7:00. Yeah, she gave me a current topic, I'm reading. Okay, on June 3rd, Personnel, Ms. Adriani again, probably around 9:15 in the morning here. Tuesday, June 9th, which is the agenda session. And the last meeting of the year for the public and for the board, I guess, is June 16th, the regular televised meeting. Oh, yes?
Mr. Silkaski, I believe that we have a technology meeting scheduled for Tuesday, May 5th. I'll check the date and let Mrs. Tori know.
It's not on my current sheet, so.
Yeah, I'll check the date and.
Right, I'll read that Tuesday, that Tuesday.
I'll check it, Joanna, I'll.
Mr. Sutcliffe, on the May 12th meeting, because you made the team deadline, will that also be voting actions for the removal of staff, non-time staff members?
Yeah, you have to at the time. You can't wait till next week.
Okay, now we can go on to old business. Any old business? Go ahead.
One of the board's goals that we adopted in, I guess in our board workshop, was to develop an annual evaluation calendar on or before May 1st. May 1st is the nearing and I don't know if we're going to discuss it as a board or, I mean, I know that we have to do our self-evaluation and we have to evaluate chief school administrator.
We don't have to do a self-evaluation. We have to evaluate chief school administrator, am I right? This is the way you said.
You are keeping that policy, requires you to do it yourself, to do a self-evaluation. It is a useful tool. That's one of the bylaws that is not going to be on your agenda for next week? Because of the changes in CUSAC and accountability regs, the board self-evaluation is no longer required. But many districts are keeping it in place because it is.
Well, it's recommended by school boards and Quinn Thornton.
It is, yes.
But, I mean, we.
One of the goals was that we would.
Okay, okay, so Ms. Mommy, the way to solve this problem is we will set up one more meeting next month. That's not on the calendar over here and we will try to accomplish those.
Well, this was to re, to review the committee structure. That's the one that Nancy's reading. So we have the review of committee structure and an annual evaluation.
Okay, Ms. Mommy?
Are we gonna have a meeting with Quinn Thornton to do this?
Yeah, I'm gonna call her up, see where she's available. Any other new business?
New business, yes.
Go ahead.
First, it's my duty to inform everybody that it's the 45th anniversary of birthday.
Thank you.
And I, I have, it's something, I, I don't sit at a computer all day and I keep carrying my phone. And we get meeting notices and things all the time. And I have to keep going back into attachments and I seem to miss things. I've requested before and Joanna has done it a couple of times. On, on Friday, we received an attachment that had me. If there could be a list, please, for just what's coming for the following week, then I'm okay, because I, I put things in my calendar in the phone and then it turns out that it's, it's not right or they've been changed. It happens to be with negotiations, I, I was away on vacation, I came back, I thought I missed something and we wanted to change. I'm not saying that we don't get that information, we do. But it comes in as individual pieces. So unless I open up the attachment to the calendar or go into another site, and I'm not that tax advocate. So I, I'm requesting a list on Friday of whatever board meetings, not school events for individual schools, but whatever board meetings are coming up for the following week, I would really appreciate that.
That's a good point, that's a good point. Very good.
It, it can be in the same one, send the attachment as well. But this way, when I open up, I open up, it's right there. I don't have to go into another attachment.
You're looking for the information that's on that sheet within the body of the email.
Correct.
So it could be broken down from that chart just for what's coming on the next week and then cut and paste.
I think we could accomplish this.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, new business?
We'll just call. Joanna will be working on that. Just wish all of our administrative assistants a very happy administrative assistance day tomorrow.
I didn't know that one either.
Did not know that.
Don't forget, it's even first, that's what happened.
Okay, I appreciate that public attended this meeting. And the meetings that I read off tonight, hopefully, the public will be at these meetings, they'll all someone drink your wine. Would love to see them. Yes, Ms. Mommy? Okay, I hear a question.
Ladies, gentlemen, in fact, we still have to get a comment from the public. I have never officially received any letter. And I will provide you with a statement that I walked past Mr. Barton is, and, because I received a phone call from the same recorder, that basically, all of our fields and facilities of older schools are required to share a district's agreement with township at the extension meeting. And I will provide you with a statement that I walked past Mr. Barton, is, because I received a phone call from the same reporter, that basically, all of our fields and facilities over two years ago, party shared service, agreed with township, had an extensive meeting about, uh, party field and athletic fields. And the information was provided to the recreation department at the time, that if they had any dates for certain events to use this athletic field, they should present it to us. To this date, myself, Mr. Barrett, have not received any events in which they stated that they would like to use it. That's what I'll be providing to you, reported tomorrow. I already called her, she didn't answer my phone call, but I'll... It goes around, you know, our schedule, they have a life study. They understood the winter use practices and so forth, or their games.
So she's just, you know, she's responsible, we don't, we know what exists, we didn't see it somewhere.
Any other concerns from the board or from the public? Okay, we're gonna adjourn, we have close second. We do not, everybody in the room? Again, I, I motion to go into adjourn. Thank you again for calling. Yes, Ms. Martin, adjourn.